Good afternoon. It is Friday, September 3rd, and this is the work session of the Board of Supervisors on the Space Needs Assessment. And I think we'll start out with just some introductions. I think we all met you, but it's been a little bit since we first met you. Supervisor Lisa Adams.
And Department Lucy Pat Baseball.
And Marissaider.
I'm Danielle Herman.
Brett Mendenhall.
Thank you. And we also have Joby, Brock, and Amy and Carter in the room as well. I guess we'll move on with what's on next on the agenda, the County Department Overview.
All right. Well, thank you for taking time out of your Friday to meet with us. We've met each of you separately to kind of collect some impressions or some thoughts. We told you at each of those sessions that we would come back at the end of sort of our fact-finding gathering sessions. So we've done that. We've completed all of our meetings with all the various departments and toured the facilities and things. So before we proceed to our next stage, we want to kind of give you that overview of what we found. Once we're done with this, we'll move into more of the problem solving. What can we do to help, you know, offer solutions and thoughts and suggestions to the individual? If we get to that stage, we want to go back to you, kind of overview our findings. We'll do that in a few moments, and we're going to take over, walk you through some of those. And then after that, we'll talk about some overarching themes across all departments. And then we'll open up for discussion and then talk about next steps. Any questions? Well, with that, I'll let Perona and Marie, and she'll walk us through some more findings on department by department basis.
Great. So actually, can we hand out those? They go along with the slides that we'll be showing, so you guys can take a look at it closer and read our... And so the way that this is, if the agenda that we set out, the way that this conversation at the very beginning here is we're going to go building by building within the departments within each building, and just discuss what some of the key points were within each department. And then, as Brett said, he'll come back and talk about overarching themes. But some offices, elected offices in the department have had similar themes throughout that kind of span, while we either buildings or, you know, levels within the building. And then we'll discuss kind of those larger issues that we've seen after going through maybe some of the smaller department to by department. So this, though, is a work session. If you guys have questions, and we've all met before and had some really candid discussions, please, taller, ask questions. And it is going to be pretty high level. There's a lot of detail in this. So we're really going to go through on the left side of the page, you'll see the building floor planning, kind of how that's laid out, just an idea of how that will be. And then on the left-hand side, we'll do some of those key points, and then there's more detail in the kind of leaders that goes to the floor plan. So the first building we're going to talk about is the building where in the administration building. High level, the first page here says something that we saw in the building as a whole. There's conference rooms, as you know, are utilized by all departments. If you think of some of those down on the lower level. We do have implementing a central computer for all public departments was a conversation. Hotel, hoteling station would be, has been, you know, talked about as someone coming in, moving into the building and if they're working from Nevada and then coming to Ames or vice versa. What we've heard is adjacency is within the building worked pretty well. The departments that are here, you know, work together. And then, as you know, some departments that are from your space. If you go to the next page, we'll start with you guys, or supervisors. And as I was saying, we highlighted your area on the left-hand or right-hand side of the floor plan. And then on the left is the key points. So as we met with each one of you individually, we did hear different stories of future growth. We did identify potential of two to three growth in the next five to 10 years. And the key points there in red, there was conversation amongst all of you about the individuals who were working at the front desk and how that person, you know, has their time split. And so that seemed to be a concern across each one of you. And then overflow for supervisors' meetings, when this room is packed, and we're thinking post-COVID or even pre-COVID, how that's accommodated. And then the storage space that you have within your own area, just increasing some efficiency there. Any, I know this is, this is your office space, and the next one we'll talk about, you share that space with HR. I actually think that's further down, and maybe it makes sense to discuss that next. But any comments, questions on what we've pulled together for your space?
So the actual, this sketch is not quite right.
Okay. So the... Yeah, you're missing the two offices in that back corner.
Yep, I see.
Yeah.
Yep.
And that front supervisor one is the external operations director.
This is supposed to be how it is now. I thought you were... I thought this was a change you were proposing and then you would...
No. And this is the existing conditions. Yeah, so where it says admin assistant, that's actually HR.
Yep. Director of Internal Operations.
Yeah, yeah. And then the one right next to it is also is an HR generalist's office.
The one that's gray.
The one that's gray, and then the one on the other side of the one that's gray is the supervisor office.
And then the first supervisor office in the top, they write off receptions, actually are director of external ops.
The one that goes to the lobby? Yes.
Uh, no, no.
To the reception. You have director of external operations. I got that. That door of the lobby?
No.
No, no, I got the director of external operations. Is that part of your office, though?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, but the three supervisors that you've got staffed there, the top one is external, that's really the director of external operations.
I got it.
And then on the other side, we have administrative assistant, which is director of internal operations. And the administrative assistant sits at the desk at the reception area.
Yep.
And then the desk to the right of there is intern, the HR intern.
Right. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any comments about future growth? I know we've heard different stories from each one of you on some of those positions. Is that you feel as a group that two to three is an accurate amount? Sorry, I need to speak up. But two to three, when we think of five to 10 years growth within your department, does two to three individuals sound appropriate for our, for supervisors in general?
I got that, I understand. Staff? So like, if there was to be another HR person added, or if there was to be a climate action person, or a diversity and equity person, or another intern coming in?
A risk manager.
Risk manager. Yeah.
And we do have two positions right now that are in administration but are housed elsewhere, and that is the risk manager. I don't know the role of that position, but the other one is the...
Yeah, and down the hall.
Yes.
Yeah, so I mean, I think that sounds...
Yeah.
I would say that sounds about right, two to three.
Okay, yeah. Key points, you have to look at main lobby. Anything else that you see that you'd want to add for high level? We're thinking very high level. I do want to skip, since this makes sense. I know the next page is auditor. I think about four or five pages ahead of that, it's given resources. I think it makes sense to talk about them.
Don't have page numbers on here. That's how it's after the recorder.
About six pages. Sorry about that. But I think, yeah, it'd be good to talk to about them, since they are in your same space. They also saw growth of one to two. Keep in mind that because of the crossover, I think that that also covers the risk manager and HR position. So I want to make sure that we're accounting for that in the right department. I mean, I guess a question to you guys would be, that risk manager person or the HR falls under HR, but right now is in your office, so, you know, in your office space.
Right.
So when we think of your growth, if you take out the HR individual and risk manager, are you really still growing two to three?
So when I, when I talk about growth, I'm talking about us and HR together. Yes. I don't really see there being much growth.
Yes.
Right, yeah.
So that's why, let me go back. Is this supposed to be what is now?
Yes. Yeah, so we'll have to update this with this, like the other one.
Yeah. Here's your question. I just want to make sure, as HR says, that we're, we want to grow one to two, and you guys say you're growing two to three. Am I really growing, you know, four to five?
We were thinking about support stamp, right?
Yeah. And that's what I thought. I just wanted to confirm that we weren't adding a bunch of extra offices that we were trying to have to look to accommodate for, so. Some key points from our conversation with the HR staff was that they, they actually expressed interest of having more separation from the board of supervisors as far as employee confidentiality comfort, coming to the board supervisor's office to have a conversation. So that is one, you know, and that's also kind of why I want to understand where the growth would be coming from if they were to relocate somewhere else within the same building that we were making sure that the space was about. There, I mean, we know this department's broken up through the building. They'd like, like to be in one space, so that just goes back to having the end. So those two comments from them will conflict if you want to have it all together or separate. They do believe front desk employee, same as you guys, inefficient at the time. So there's continuity between you guys, so that is, you feel that that person is split, and they feel the same way about the storage. Any questions, comments, document, resources?
If you were relocating HR, I think a good share of that storage would go with them.
And I know they have the storage in the lower level for all their HR files, so.
Yeah, I, I don't know what's in there other than what's used primarily by HR. It's training resource materials or other files.
Employee files.
Yeah, that, that would be, I think, a re-purposed office. You know, it doesn't, doesn't have external windows, but still, I think that could be a re-purposed office. Practice and better storage, because I don't know if you look through all those cabinets we have in there.
That's not realized.
Yeah, yeah.
You're already starting to touch on some of our high-level themes about how we deal with storage and digitizing some files, so.
Anything else on that one? Auditor was next. We met with Lucy, and she didn't anticipate any growth. They've had a little bit of change over the last five, 10 years. She didn't see in the next five, 10, any growth in employees. She did make a point, there's a little bit of a contradiction, but she was a little weary to digitize it and also said that if I digitized files, I could save a lot of space. And so she did say that that would be a good idea. The current location for the voting equipment makes it really difficult for her. That elevator, I know, isn't always as efficient. She does have direct access from that elevator down to get the voting equipment out, but I know the point, it can be pretty difficult. I think in a perfect world, it would be great to have that somewhere readily accessible on like a lower level or first floor, where you can get right out of a building. You know, a lot of counties have low yields, so. I know whole counties, I mean, large, large counties does, but something to consider. So that was, oh, pretty much what we've heard from Lucy. You guys have any comments on that one?
Was there concern about digitizing just if something were to happen?
Yeah.
Or keeping it safe, or?
I, I think it's, we always run into this when we, when we digitize a file and then we throw away the physical file. Do I have a backup of that if I lose that information and we have legal requirements?
Right.
As a county, what, what do I do once my backup for that? So I think it's just making sure that those checkboxes are taken care of as they're moved to being digitized. She was just nervous.
Yeah.
She's like, well, if I lose it, then I lose it, and I don't have, I don't have this.
The courts.
Yeah. Exactly. So we all like that paper, right?
Yep. Showing our age.
Yep. I know. Anything else on our space? No?
Okay.
Treasure was next. Again, no future growth for employees. They did have, they really liked having that backdoor access. We talked about security, cash, being able to, so. Their space seems to be working pretty well. They do, as you know, get a lot of queuing that happens in the lobby. So I think that that, you know, we talk about the use of their space and rooms, and then their lobby layout would be something to look at. And that may be something that we look at just the main lobby in general, with that individual who is down there. If there's another way we can deploy that to make more space for, or accommodate the treasure. I think their location and what we've heard, they want to be on the first floor, that's the busiest department. You know, it's not, you're not going to yank them and put them here. Anything you see on treasure that you want to discuss? We'll keep moving. Facilities management, get Joby to chime in here, but I didn't see any growth anticipated. And in terms of you guys, I think you had it, that person that you added, and that part is taken care of. Yep.
One additional, but...
Okay. They do need more vehicle storage for departments. And that was about 6,000 square feet plus or minus. A lot of that is, you know, is being stored in a agreement with the voyage building, and that also is with IRDM. They do need some more facility stores throughout all the building facilities, and their office file storage is rather cramped. So I think looking at getting them some more work areas. So part of that is, it's like a whole lot of manuals, a lot of that information that they've got to pull up. Any comments on facilities? Recorder again, no growth. They, their lobby and car spaces is underutilized, they have a lot of space, but I don't believe that it's, that they really get that full. Security issues, that I do, I do like to implement some security glass or more separation between public and employees. Their passport station is a little cramped, and they would like, when they, when they have that up and running and they, they will have more space. The public, the library index gives you a list for all, so I think they're a little patient being in the building, adjacency makes them. Information technology, we met with Far, and she was seeing some future growth of potentially one employee in Ames. She liked that having an IT person at the Justice Center and then, you know, potentially having one in Ames as far as having someone there on site. She did believe that there's space, I think, works real well. They are on servers on backup. But their shop space and workstations are a little disjointed as far as how circulation works, how they go in and out of the space. There were some comments about how that lobby person interacts with individuals. I think what happens is someone comes and walks behind them all the time, who actually works there. So there's, nothing too, too much. Emergency management was a very interesting conversation. Right now, as this building is set up, it's that EOC conference room is supportive of the generator, but the rest of the building is not. So in it, let's say, implement weather situation, and let's say the power goes out. They are, they're supportive, but not facilities, so restrooms, kitchen, those things that they would need. If they were actually comforted down this building for 24, 48 hours, they don't have available for them. Their front EOC room, they don't leave a size appropriately. They are cramped in there when they run drills, like for actual emergency drills. Space is limited.
They do, I'm sorry, just for clarification, in the conference room or in their office?
In the EOC conference, the war room, so to speak, when, when they...
Okay.
Yep. They also, as you know, operate, you know, vehicles and other storage, and they were requesting more climate control storage, partially because some of those items with the humidity have issues over, over time when they're hot and fast controlled buildings. And then I mentioned that. I think their office spaces, I mean, they, they were very gracious and thankful for having the space they do have, and really appreciate what it kinds of provided.
I want questions for it. So currently, no security between spaces, or they can bring the space between the office to the EOC room, or?
Yes.
So I just want to be clear.
And I, I think the question there is, is to, there's a code question that we will be looking into. Is if you, you know, you've got that stair and there has to be access to that stair, so how many acres do you have to cut out of that floor? But in an emergency, they would also prefer to be secure, where someone couldn't come in and affect their operations, well, their operation. There's just some things about how we would typically see from a best practice standpoint, an emergency operations center functioning that just are, are kind of missing here with the way it's set up. I mean, even things like breakout spaces for phone calls, they're trying to do it all in the same room at the same time. Makes it hard during those situations for them to deal with it, and just some other things like that. So it can is per person of the bigger issue that there's just not a lot of space to work with to try to accomplish all of that. Any other emergency management? Assessor. This is an interesting conversation, because the conference room is utilized by many departments. So they were looking for, and we also heard from other departments that use that conference upstairs, that they'd like a functionality upgrade in the way that there was the conversation about the owl and how great that is and bringing something like that down there. May back up a little bit. They were looking to add four to five employees. It depends on if the assessor's office combines with storage count. And that is a conversation that is in place. So knowing what that would be, I know you guys maybe have some, you're looking at each other, but...
City of Ames doesn't show any, any interest in that. And they have ordinance, it means they maintain a separate assessor's office. And unless they get rid of that ordinance, it's the way it is. County gets nothing to say about it.
Yeah. And from our conversations, they made it sound more positive than that. But it seemed to be moving forward in some, in some way, so.
I'm surprised.
I would be surprised, but, yeah. So, but then, but then the other part of that conversation, we've been talking about this for 20 years. You don't, you don't, so you're hearing both, and in doing a space needs and facility assessment, you know, we're talking about adding four to five, I'm hearing maybe from you guys, don't account for that. Or, or maybe what I'm hearing is, might be some flex space that you could be accessing.
Well, that's what it's like. City assessors, city assessor risk management moved on, and the city has basically gone through the process of getting a list to fill that position of anybody who's eligible in the state to be the assessor. If they were considering getting rid of their ordinance, they wouldn't be doing that, because this would be an ideal time to...
Right.
Yeah. So maybe that's a, yeah, that would be logical, and that would be a good hope, but we have not seen anything from our end that says that's going to be happening.
Okay, that's really good to know. So, so maybe we may have a couple options there for you on the table when we come back, so. They did make a comment about the lobby space. Again, need, want it to be more secure, but then also the self-service computer isn't being utilized, and maybe it's a way, technology-wise, to create a computer to access multiple departments for the public. So if they come in, they don't maybe have to go to an individual, not have to go to the recorded office, or they don't have to go to the assessor, they could just go to a public computer and access those departments to create some efficiencies there. And I think that's an IT question, because those departments, their sensitivities between them, how they can store. So.
Sure.
They do need room for future growth in profiles and employees that we just mentioned. So there's that. I think that there's also still the same conversation about digitizing.
Okay, I was going to say, I keep talking about file space, which I totally understand, that if we're talking about digitizing, are we not, are there things that can be digitized or makes sense to digitize? Like, like manuals, which anymore, everything's coming without a manual. But at the same time, you've got to take it out someplace and fix something in the middle. And we also need a hard copy.
Exactly. Each officer knows what those legal requirements are, and I think it would be going through, you know, we're getting maybe a little head, but it's good to have this conversation. If you were looking at a county, why did it digitize? How that's done and maybe done systematically, where there's a list of what casting means of this file, and then dozens, and then you chip away at all of that, right? And knowing how much physical space that could be digitized goes away. You know, I think that's a movie of conservative effort for each department. So the next was environmental health, planning, and development. They're already seeing growth. They are seeing additional two to three within the next five to 10 years. One of the key points in this has, this, I think, we all know, is that they have employees and interns across the hallway, and just that that makes their department feel disjointed. There's no, currently, if you've gone down, they're, they're looking for a more secure lobby space. So you don't have a lot of public interaction, but when they do, you come in and it's, you're, you're in their space already. Having a conference room across the hall was also a concern, because when they come and do planner reviews and things like that, a lot of times, they're just taking that person into that office space for the lobbyists and sitting down. Someone that's, well, comes from across the hall, doesn't have any technology, doesn't have, you know, and it's just, I think it's a, it's what's closer to these. And they are growing their space in terms of storage. So that is this building. You guys have any reporting on to the Justice Center? Any comments of just what you're digesting on the spot right now?
Yeah, what is, what is this space right here? So it's conference, and then the space directly to the right of the conference here.
So right now, I believe some of those offices, one was for the new watershed position, and I think the other one is...
Was the risk manager?
That was where the risk was.
Oh, okay.
Right now, it's not being attached yet, though.
Thanks.
And so really, if we say the watershed management position was this build, so I think that would turn to lack in this. Just for clarity that even though they fall under conservation, that person is housed here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks. I just didn't know if that was... Thanks, I just didn't know if that was storage or.
No, no, no. So the justice center, um, a very, very complicated building. I mean, we've got a jail, we've got the sheriff, they're all kind of compact in there. You've got the courts and the court system and the security that goes with that as well, and you have the county attorney and the. It makes sense for a county, you know, to have it all in one place, they're easy, that's where you go for these things. There are some concerns at high level with the building with security issues in, in the spaces. I mean, no accessing the building for the county attorney. And a lot of that security was promised for one left side of the building, where the courts and the county attorney conversation. Didn't hear quite as much from the, the sheriff and the jail, I mean, they're the ones providing the security, so they're, and I think they have quite those same issues. There was conversations both from courts and county attorney about not having a large courtroom for class A and B trials. The conference rooms that are outside of the courtrooms, I think, I don't know if any of you've been in those, the awkward shaped rooms that probably accommodate two people are underutilized or people are, you know, not, you know, feeling comfortable within them. Or the other option is the fishbowl, and so there's some, some questions there from high level. From the courts and attorney side too, they're using the public restroom. And so when they are in, you know, trial and need to use restroom, they're going out in the public and, and breaking that secure barrier, so there's concerns there. If, if you know courts, you know, that the judges, you know, there's a separation there with the judges and all that with county attorney. And so we really want to keep them separated right now, they're sharing a back hallway. They've got some underhand agreement about sharing a restroom every once in a while. So there's just some sensitivity there, that they're using that restroom, men and women are using the same in there in between trial fifteen minutes time, but. So with that, even though I just spent a lot of time talking about that, we'll talk about sharing jail first. I did not hear anything about future employees. What I, like, my gut is, is that there, there is, and I think that we need to re- so hold back on that. My, my kind of remembering the conversation was deputies would be increased, but.
So request the sheriff, usually I guess for staff positions, your deputies on the road positions, not, not for, I've not seen any requests for clerical or in office.
In that, that's what I remember from the conversation, there was a lot of information, this meeting was, oh man, two or three hours, a lot came down from that. So just to be true, to make sure we've got it all. The one thing with the, the deputies is that they only have to sit down for a moment and they're on the road, so they might not need an office, so. Key points, their number needing, needing for training is increased, so they have a small training room in the justice center, but then they also have the range, which is located northwest of town. Both of those are, the range has its own sort of issues and we can get into detail, but I don't know if it's necessary now, but the train room in the justice center is undersized, they are over capacity when they train that room. So, and then they also hear several spaces are undersized, the armory is packed full, uniform storage, bell sword. The drone team, they're actually looking at adding more drones, we talked about equipment size, where that stored, we have in our own office, we have drones, and he's got an entire and we, we recognize your part of our office to accommodate that, so that's something with them as well. When we go to the jail side, they had a marshal report come out, which we are not ready to, and we can't put eyes on it. Either, but they did give us some bullet points from that, one was that the jail doesn't meet code requirements for separation of male, female. Female inmates are walking in front of males, they're also, I think they've figured out to solve some of the problems, but putting things over windows, so that's not, that's temporary. There's no areas for officers to change if they encounter a biohazard on the road or something like, let's say that whatever may happen. The only place they can shower right now is in a jail cell, and they shower in a jail cell, which is monitored by a camera.
Oh, sorry.
So that, that is something we want to look at for them to have their own separate facilities. And they do have, it has some issues in the booking area, and I think that they would like another, when they have school starts, they will temporarily hold people in those booking cells, and I think they just need more capacity, because those people aren't going to stay overnight, so. That area, I think, just seems to be looked at, it may be converting your room back into a booking cell. There's a lot there with the, the sheriff, they also have requests for a lot of storage for all their. Judicial courts, but they have any growth anticipated, their storage spaces, and they admitted this, are not being utilized, we talked about Christmas stores in the back hallway. They did have a comment about grand courtroom, that was consistent among the courts and also the county attorney. They would like to maintain having five courtrooms available. Do you have anything else on that? You guys see anything? I went through sheriff pretty quick too, so if you guys want to circle back on that, let me know. So they're having five courtrooms available, but currently there's, there's six of them in the building, one of them is being utilized as that conference room that we met in or county attorney, they want, they still want to have five courtrooms. So the.
In other words, they, reducing to four courtrooms to make one bigger. It is not seen as something that they would want to entertain.
Oh, is that what you're not like grand courtroom?
Yeah, I don't, yes, okay. So you think of some other county, I don't know if we've been like to Marshall County or something, there, there's a courtroom that can hold eighty to hundred twenty people. That's for the class A B trials, and there's just not a courtroom in that building.
Oh, they only think they need five courtrooms? Yeah, sometimes there, sometimes there are two class A's and juvenile courtroom and things happening downstairs in district associate.
They need five.
Yeah, they were both on the same page of the number they needed and that they wanted.
So one, one of the courtrooms can be larger, but as long as you still have five.
Total of five.
Gotcha.
But then we have a conflict of the conference room, that is a courtroom that's been converted and changed back to conference space. So it's, I think there might be a pick your bell with that one, and we're gonna, we'll make a recommendation on how to solve some of those problems, but right now that is county attorney space and would then go back to courts. So if you were to expand a courtroom theoretically, and still maintain five. That makes sense? So county attorney, they are packing lecture teams, they see a future growth of employees of five. They both spaces at the human service center and justice center are, they're just tight, they, they have attorneys that don't have offices and can't, you know, private conversations and things like that. They, there's this conversation in here, like how it's laid out and disjointed, I know that this has been looked at in the past. Back to the conversation at the very beginning, we talked about the security issues, they, they requested and love to have parking in the back and be able to access their space not from the front of the building and through that lobby, but through the back. Currently, the courts has that ability, but because of that separation, there's a conflict there, so there may be a balance, but they're looking for some secure entry. And also having private restrooms, same conversation we had a little bit ago. And then the court or the state I T uses some of the county attorney's base, there is one individual, an I T person with the courts that is in one of their offices. There's been some challenge. So that was the justice center, is there any? Want to move on? I'm trying to go through these parts so we can talk about your thoughts at the pool level, so. Human services, did you know, and I don't think I'll go through all of these, but we do have some departments that are co-located there, you know, in both locations. And then we also have some spaces that, and empty spaces that are underutilized, D H S, this will be a conversation, we can all just know what they said, but. First, I've got boost, this is one individual we met with, her, it was a great conversation. She serves as both food and storage counties and has an office in both, but she works from remote, probably ninety percent of sites at home, she lives here in Nevada. She really just needs storage and a touchdown space. Right now, we're providing an office at the H S C, she doesn't necessarily need that, and ideally would prefer a touchdown space here in Nevada closer to home. So no growth anticipated. That's pretty straightforward, just accommodating for her. And her storage is really some of the things that she can't have throughout the year, like three hundred bytes on this, so you just need to store that for a moment. D H S was the conversation that we were most looking forward to, to understand if that growth needs or not, they don't see any growth needs, some of their going back to how many people will be working remote or not. We're still trying to get some, some hard numbers on that, because we don't know how many currently would be sharing workstations. I think it was pretty much half of their staff would be remote, but I don't know the mix of that. I know we had that conversation of, well, if someone's there in the morning, someone's there in the afternoon, you can share the same desk. But understanding that will help us with this, so. I think it's just a follow-up conversation email with Joe Beadie on that last little bit, we've got most of what we need, it's just understanding that they can share spaces and how many of them. We do have the total numbers though. They did ask for more storage for child belongings, secure storage. And their lobby, when they have people coming with sensitive information, it's just, they can't have that confidentiality because of the size. Specifically when they have larger, sometimes more than just one person comes in, and maybe, you know, and just making sure that they can have that, that separation. But I do think that there's, there's a lot of opportunity there from the B part, and I'm glad that we'll be able to look at that space a little bit closer. Juvenile courts, no anticipated growth. They do say it would be beneficial to hold juvenile courts in Ames as a really intended. In this building, there was a courtroom that was down on the lower level and when the building was built here in Nevada, juvenile courts, here, but the majority of their clients have support functions, population center and everything.
So if they were to move juvenile court to Ames, you could have four courtrooms.
Exactly, yes.
Yep, we're on the same page.
Yeah, I, I said, I said it earlier, but.
Yep, and so, so right now, as it works, so judge for juvenile is located in Nevada, but everybody else in juvenile Ames travels Nevada. So there's a balance there. Space also, right now in H S C for juvenile is oversized, they use about fifty percent of their storage. They want to say that they're only using four of their offices and they have seven, so they had growth and then retracted. And so when they say they want to anticipate growth for the next five to ten years, it would be something to look at. I think there's a higher level conversation on flexibility and how we accommodate for you guys to kind of change the whole time, so how to make that work for them. Veterans Affairs. Together, they see a growth of five employees, they're looking for more storage based in workstations. And they, they did say that the lobby reception area is not efficient, the forms need to be filled out. As far as veterans affairs, they do meet in different locations, they aren't always there, when we talk about community services, they really would like some of their space.
I think that's an idea, what they ask, if they're kind of five more employees.
I was gonna ask when we talked to them, before.
On the date here, that was August thirteenth.
Yeah, so there, this one's gonna, gonna have to have more conversation about this.
But we don't really know.
We don't know until.
The county to provide space or what would happen.
They're doing an assessment currently.
They are, I'm thinking there are some code requirements for the county to provide space.
But still, what's the five additional?
I, I think, yeah.
That's what I have, like, that kind of surprised me. Yeah, it, it goes back to the regional versus county.
Clarification on where those five fit. Someone in regional, it's a projection based on what region may do or this.
And that, that.
General assistance employees and community services.
Right, right, right.
Clarification on where those potential five. Side of the fence they would be.
Right, right, and, and it could also be the pressures, just based on the pressures we're feeling in our office, we would like to see five more so that we could accommodate.
Right, because of the volume, the volume.
Right. Yeah, that was, I don't know. I, I haven't been through the entire office downstairs, but I always had the sense that there's a lot of unused space down there, am I, am I right? Is there some?
So if we go through the building, just like D H S is a good example, and, and throughout COVID, they've been working from home. So if you go through their space, it feels completely empty, but it's there. I think that similarly with veterans affairs and community services, they are spending a lot of time out in the community. So I felt that this, this level with these guys seemed pretty occupied when we walked through it. But then on the other floor, we have a meeting room in some areas that touched in, it's reconfigured, and I don't know, there were some community services that stay heated in that space right now, so you'll see it on the juvenile courts plan if you flip back one. Just kind of on your left-hand side, the gray area, a lot of that space is underutilized right now, and you're, you're right, it is.
I was, I was actually just thinking about the backside of community services.
Oh, yeah.
Where, where.
This is a conference room.
And then those three offices in the back and then the open office and all that, is that space being used for anything other than storage right now?
It, it would appear, I think, when we walk through, that a lot of those open office environments were primarily being used for storage. Yeah, so right now, even my notes, you see, four people that are being used for storage.
Oh, I've seen that, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're totally fine, it, the, the details and the small text, but yeah, so they are using some of that. They really wanted more drop-down space, and less cubicles were stored, they said, you know what, if we had a national storage room that we could organize or involve, we could condense this. Right now, they've just got, you know, they've got a, we're all surface and it starts that.
Going back to juvenile court stage, the gray area to the very far right, with that.
Those are mechanical spaces and the shop. Behind the elevator.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I was on the wrong.
There is a page that shows how much of that is being used.
I don't, I think we would be the same.
No, I think you're, you're right, we just tried, I think we rolled it into the whole for the judicial, yeah, we need to get that added.
Yeah, we'll have to add a page to that.
Thank you, Nina.
And if we do, just to touch base on that space right now, they, they had added security, which they were really thankful for, I do know. Um, I do know that back wall that you see on the right-hand side, if you look at the gray plan, um, where we've got some glass windows. Right now, there's a just kind of touchdown spaces. They don't have offices for, I mean, they were really, felt very tight in that space.
And all the conference rooms.
Meeting room. Like the one that we met in?
Yeah, yeah. That's a, that's a useful, I think that one gets used a lot, but some of those other ones, you know, um, in that middle area.
Yes.
Did you check on use of those? How often does it get used?
There was one office there in here that there was somebody in there.
And then there's, and then, yeah, there's alternatives.
But the conference spaces, the big rooms, do those get booked? Do those get booked a lot, Joby?
No, no. And I, I think the only reason that they're going to, to that space is just because of numbers and separating individuals. There's a conversation about the conference rooms in this building and, and technology. Um, and, and specifically in those places, there wasn't, those columns are in the way, that's not a good way to project.
Right.
So, they really want a larger multipurpose room, but to Joby's point, you know, we've, we've heard from him that that is not being utilized. It's like he provided and they, you know, use it or, or not.
What did you say today?
Um, the, the billion users.
Okay.
Yeah, because you think of it, it's a general room. Um, maybe not this is a good example, but you think of the conference rooms downstairs that are used by other offices and departments, same thing. But I think, Linda, you're right. I think that they're using that other conference room much more. Um, I think the question would be, if they have technology, would they be utilized more? And that's what I, I feel that we were hearing, is that they were looking for technology.
In order to what?
Uh, video conferencing. That comes down to, you know, if I'm meeting with someone and I need to have this in or.
Sure. That doesn't take rooms this size.
Exactly, exactly.
I know before they were happening, well, I think boost used to be there unless you're vacuuming there. I know that the CICS, the governing board would be there, some of the advisory boards would be there. It is kind of odd having the pillars. There, you have the tables around and you're talking, you can't see who's next to you because they're on the other side of the pillar and it tends just to projection.
Yeah, yeah.
Doesn't want to be in there.
Because of that, yeah.
That would help, but the columns would still be there.
Right.
Yeah. So, when I think of departments that are meeting, let's say I want my entire office to meet and I have this many employees. Um, speaking meetings, particularly DHS that has the most, they have like twenty-six or something like that or more. They have those meetings virtually. Other departments and offices felt that they could still meet their needs within what the building is all. Um, so maybe it goes back to those other events. If you've got, you know, CICS and others that are looking for larger meeting rooms. Is the county the one operating that or is that somewhere else?
Well, they use this room.
And use, or use this room.
Or whatever. And this room is set up pretty well for, you know, if it says meeting in here.
Yeah, it's a little, little challenging just with the number of people now, but they're doing hybrid seating, so that it can be just even lower. I don't know.
I guess my question would be, is that something the county would want to provide in Ames? Or is this space, I put enough and we wouldn't look for that multipurpose? It's not being scheduled.
I think one of the reasons that the group is used here, especially with hybrid is the screen and the owl to do it, and not having that capacity to project necessarily over there. That's just been one of their re-reasonings.
A lot of people come from different counties, so it doesn't matter to them when they're going to Ames or Nevada necessarily, they're already on the road.
Right.
Okay.
I, I, I just, I'm not contrary, but I do think it's valuable to have a large space like that in Ames. So, I don't know if looking at moving the offices that exist on the south side of the, the building to the north side so that to open up some of that space where those pillars don't exist. I mean, do those pillars have to be there or are they holding up a roof?
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe moving that. I mean, if those pillars have to stay there, like change, changing something else, I don't know to.
It would be nice to have a decent training room there. And, you know, I think it comes after offices, make sure we get everything, you know, but it's just seems like it seems like if there was a use for it, it would be being used now. Cause it's not so dysfunctional because it has a couple of columns in it.
Right. But I think, I think it does get used is my, is my point. It gets used, it may not be booked all the time. It, there might have.
People may use it without booking it, so we don't know they're using it.
Well, that too, but yeah, it gets used.
We do, if there's an open room, we just get together and meet and I don't know if that work.
Right. I tell you, it seemed like it was being used all the time when I shared a wall with it. So, I, I know people are in there all the time.
Okay.
Anything else? I want to just see. Um, real quick, the engineer building, um, high level, the, the exterior building is not insulated. Um, properly insulated or insulated. So, I think that there's, um, we're, we're paying to heat the outdoors. Um, the restrooms, they only have one set of restrooms, the male and female, and they are not ADA compliant. So, they're, they're missing some clearance. Overall, as a county, they're doing pretty well. There's some small items, but this building was the one that the restroom for. Um, so this building, uh, we have engineers, um, and IRBM here and engineers, um, me and Darren, he said he was thought maybe an additional one to two, uh, be more drafting position. They believe their space works well, no real complaints except the pole. And they believe that their space, you know, can be a lot, you know, that they could expand and be okay. Currently, there, that open office in the upper right-hand corner has two techs in it. It has room for future growth, but right now, if you think of utilization of space, you've got two people in that very large area. So, it doesn't mean underutilized in that, um, upper right-hand corner of the office. Um, so IRBM is located here. They also have a future growth of one to employees. Um, their current office space is cramped, so if you, they're in the lower left open office. So, they're all in the same building. Um, it may make sense to look at, you know, could some of those people utilize that and so lay out their staff? But when you look at if engineers are gonna add two more or IRBM's gonna add two more, then you're probably out of capacity unless you do some maybe moving some storage or files. One of the big things with IRBMs, same with facility management, is the 4H storage. And not, but, and they have an entire list of the second firm. That was it for the engineer building. This would be, for the most part, um, doing okay. Um, conservation at McFarland Park. So, Mike is, is growing that department and it's, it's seen that he thought it would be two to three employees uh, over the next five, ten years. Uh, currently at the conservation building, they are, um, they are on top of each other. They're, um, they have no private restrooms as well, so they are sharing it with the public. Their parents, we, we talked about the program space right now. They have that large program space, the auditorium. They ideally, they didn't think that that was really meeting their needs. They would really ideally like to have classrooms. And so, that, that was a, a longer conversation about what that would look like. And then, we did discuss similar to the range, and he's not part of the facilities assessment, but he has two other buildings that are more remote within the county. Um, and I know some have been reconfigured to add some offices, but he felt that that needed to be looked at as a whole when looking at conservation. And then I think as well, their storage right now, uh, is in the basement of this building. There is no access except up that four-foot wide stairwell to get all of their programming equipment out. There's labor hours there, safety. I mean, there's a lot of reasons why you'd want to have direct access to the exterior of the building.
So, does he have two staff sharing each private office?
Yeah, and some of them he has three. And one office space. And then if they need to have a private HR conversation or meeting, they're going into his office. The building, from having conversations with Joby, I mean, the, the building is in good condition, but we, I mean, I, I, I love the building, the study, everything's great. Like, what we're, are understanding is that everything is maxed out from a you know, HBC, MEP, um, sewer, all of that. And so, putting in addition onto this building would require updating all of those. So, it may be, you know, is there another standalone building in the same site? Um, there, there are options there, but right now, um, that we're, we're maxed out in this building. We've got some major upgrades.
And you, you mentioned here now the, the land they have across the road, the deputy property. Um, I was told the other day that the, that, you know, that land's been the, the owners of that land want to have that maintained as a, um, very land.
Yep.
Not, not a big building or anything like that. I think that's something to consider if we are building. And we're gonna have a, a, a session just to talk about use of that land in a couple of weeks.
So, the, uh, the idea with that land is to leave its natural.
Natural.
And, and.
Yeah, I mean, there might be some shelters or something like that, but it's not like a, a huge, a huge going site. Yeah, that's my understanding now.
Thanks for that. Animal control. Anna's pretty new to her position, I think about a year. Um, she didn't anticipate any growth. She's been obviously with the county for a while. She said, um, just some of the layout, um, with the way that you walk into the building and separating the lobby from the employee area would be, um, welcome. Um, and then just, um, having animals in isolation as far as their quarantine and that, and having those spaces. I think she was starting to go through and changing the layout of that for it to work. But right now, some of the location where the dogs are in relationships with the cats and, and some of that is a concern. And then, I think that was about it. For the most part, everything seemed to be working pretty well there. So, it'd be maybe some small thoughts about the lobby and how to better utilize their space. So, right now, they do have the over, overhead door and you can see right up there, it's not being utilized. So, when they have deliveries, they're not actually using that to load in and out. There's, I think there's some opportunity there.
For the animals.
Or bring animals in and out, so. Yep.
What does HRC does not support animals? What does that mean?
Exactly.
That means the HRC. Basically.
Yep. You couldn't store animals in that area.
Oh, just in this room and this.
Also, you can use it for additional. Yeah, so, so if you wanted to flip some stuff around more like a note for a while, I can't say, let's expand the dog isolation area into this room. I don't have the mechanicals to support it. So, that I'm, that I'm triggering an upgrade to mechanicals by making it a fast move.
Thank you. Oh, when you remodeled the what? Gotcha.
And that was remodeled in two thousand and eighteen. I mean, it's, it's.
Yeah.
Pretty new, so. So, those were the buildings we were asked to look at. I think what, what I think the rest of today and what we'd really like to, to understand from you guys, I know that's a lot to digest. Um, some probably wasn't a surprise. Um, some may have claimed it, but to go over, kind of overarching of themes that we saw, um, from all the departments and things that might be able to be looked at of higher level, um, as far as you know, moves and those types of spaces. But I'm gonna hand it over to Brad unless you guys have anything you want to suggest before we do that. But it's kind of just an open discussion at this point about these items and then what are acceptable.
Okay. So, one of the, the first item we've discussed a little more extensively along the way, and that is to try to find as much space as possible through reduction in dead files. Uh, we know that it's not a universal solution across all departments. Some departments are required to maintain hard copies of things. Even in those departments, not everything necessarily has always had to be saved in a paper copy, so. Some departments have made space gains by digitizing files. It doesn't sound like any one department has completely gone digital. Uh, they're working on it. One of the restrictions or one of the impediments to that seems to be a little bit just time or resources. So, one of the things that we'll talk about as we move forward is, you know, you spend more resources in filing space or just spend the resources to contract or do something to get a bigger jump on digitalization of files. We think that's where one sort of easy button on getting some spaces in certain areas of the county facilities. The other one, since you have two large population centers in Nevada Ames, you've got departments that sort of span both. I don't think there's too much sort of a duplication with people having one office here and one office there, but there's a restrict, there's a impediment to be, you know, to work efficiently sometimes when you're trying to look for space in another city, you're moving back and forth. And, uh, we see in our commercial office clients for the last few years, more and more and more use of hoteling space that, that can help you with, with, uh, you know, employees that are, officials who are moving back and forth. It'll also have an impact on this whole new work-from-home conundrum or, uh, sort of manifestation that we're sort of wrestling with here, you know, as we transition from COVID. Other than DHS, not too many departments have been able to completely analyze or even, uh, stop and think too much about work-from-home policies, particularly those, uh, situations where it generates space savings. So, while some departments say, hey, we're gonna have some work-from-home, uh, capabilities, they aren't necessarily looking to give up that, that one desk, that one workstation that somebody is at. So, uh, we have to think differently about if, if that's one avenue to help alleviate problems of, of working. You'll have to begin to start thinking about that model where, you know, yeah, we're gonna let you work from home, but would you do come? You may not, you may be sharing a desk with someone. We're gonna work schedule that allows you to be here Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and somebody's here Tuesday, Thursday, whatever that happens to be. Um, the entire workforce of, of the nation, if not the world is wrestling with that. Uh, right now, DHS is where the only one department who is actively trying to see what they can do.
You know, what we heard is, is that most departments, they understand, I'm a county department, I need to be public facing, I need to be available. So, how do I do that with the work from home? And I don't know if, if it's in some offices, it's some people that actually could part of the time or not, but overwhelmingly, they also think they would be in the office.
It'll take some staffing, reorganization, always have somebody available to meet the public. Maybe it's not with the same person and you're sort of working shifts. And you, that might be one of the trade-offs, be able to work from home, you have to be willing to sort of, you know, be that public representative when you're at the office. Uh, but anyway, flex spaces will allow us to consider both that, that person who is working in Ames that has to be in Nevada occasionally or vice versa. And maybe some of that flex space can be set up in a way that is not so much department by department all the time, but maybe there's facilities within a building that allow different departments to utilize flex space and share you know, across departments. I think that's another thing we're finding is right now, every department is somewhat kind of cloistered and siloed. And we talked about the computer states, the public computers, you know, can we, can we begin to explore more of a situation where, um, you know, hotel stations, public computers are resources used by a building rather than department by department by department. Lots of departments have little break rooms. You've got a big break room. We've got a big break room in this building. Does everybody need their own? You might need a, you might have to have the big, the big break room to sit at coffee. But there are departments that are gonna, you know, they don't use the big break because they've got a break room. Maybe there's some efficiency saved by centralizing some of those areas to.
Yeah, you can also lose workspace, work time though. If the break room is like in the basement here, if somebody's just going to get a cup of coffee, you know, the break room is right there and it's just a small kitchenette. That's a lot more, you know, you move less time than somebody taking an elevator down or taking the stairs down to go someplace.
Right.
And there's, yeah.
And our commercial clients, we wrestle with that a lot. They want a nice cafeteria or break room, lunch room. They want utilized or make an investment in space. But if it's a size of, if the facility is sizable enough, that takes you more time to go to the break room to get coffee. So kind of often we find small beverage stations. Just to run it, get the water, the pot, the coffee, you go, you do that. Or you're gonna go have, I just need to get away from that workspace for 15, 20 minutes and decompress. That's more centralized.
Right.
So another item we found throughout all your buildings is to improve the lobbies from both a security standpoint and also just you have sort of a really positive outlook, I think, here in the county about being accessible to your population. And so both a more welcoming, inviting, helpful lobby. You want to present that, you know, zero impressions, but you want to provide security too. And so every building seems to be a little bit in a transitional sort of state of how we're solving some of that. And then it's not only the building lobbies, it is the sub lobbies on an apartmental basis too. We started improving some of the security stations here and there, and also some of the COVID related partitioning. It seems like as other departments have seen that underway, everybody's wanting to kind of, you know, be able to feel the same about their department. And they've seen that. But one challenge will be they have a kind of careful consideration of the right timing to do it. So you don't want to put in a big bunch of permanent glass security or COVID type stations in a department that we're likely to recommend needs to move to a new location. So timing of some of that is something that needs to be some careful consideration.
Yeah.
Slow it down, Jovi.
Then another one, we, outside of the buildings that house your people, you have an investment in stations and housing equipment. And they're sprinkled around and they pride them, you know, get access to it, it made sense at a time or it was economical, so you do it. But you've grown enough and there's enough disparate needs. You've had some buildings that have fallen down, storms and things causing you to sort of reshif things. So probably careful consideration of a central vehicular equipment or more centralized. That's not one single station, but maybe rather have it all spread around. Maybe looking at, is there a way to centralize or make more common use of certain facilities that manager equipment? Because you're spending a lot of logistical time dealing with, like, four H needs the building, or you need the building. Even shuffling around, the building's not quite big enough to get to that piece in front of the back of the building. You gotta pull a bunch of equipment out to get to that project that maybe helps sort of deal with that might be beneficial. And that also kind of might dovetail to the range sort of station as well. There's equipment stored out there, you're utilizing that station because it was available to you. That's an exterior kind of facility that is a little bit different in its general nature than buildings like this one, HSC and Justice Center. When it comes to meetings, it looks like large conferencing rooms are being pretty well utilized. Smaller meeting spaces, breakout spaces, maybe a little bit more of a challenge. And other than this room with the owl and projection, you are suffering a bit countywide from room, meeting rooms that have technology. So as we have learned to do more virtually, just like we're having this meeting or a Zoom meeting, you might be able to get by with a different configuration of meeting spaces or a different number, depending on if you can meet virtually. So at HSC where we had a lot of our meetings, no, no AV capabilities in that room. So people use it a lot, but they can't use it to have an external meeting or to combine departments, you know, since county attorneys are split and judicial courts are sort of split. Maybe, you know, better teleconferencing between the two cities with proper facilities would help solve difficulties that way. But that's one thing that I think you're all pretty aware of, given, given this transition we're all making to make a better use of technology for meetings. And I would say that outside this room and maybe a couple others, vast number of meeting spaces are conducive to teleconferencing. We touched on work from home a little bit. That's still a moving target for everybody, but we'll do our best to try to see what we can do to help bring some focus to that. And then the bottom needs there, that plus sign or minus sign, it's twofold. It could be one of two or both conditions. It's either a space that is overgrown or it's looking to act, either looking for growth from the human standpoint, or they're packed in too tight. That would be a plus sign. There's got a minus sign, it means they have surplus space, or maybe their department is shrinking from the human resources side. So I don't know if this was kind of an order of most impact to start up that, you know, county attorneys and conservation. Those two departments are really kind of really on top of themselves. Particularly in conservation, they have people working from home. They don't think it's because they desire to work from home or anything. It's because they're so packed in, they'd just rather be at home because it's just kind of miserable for them. The sheriff's facility has definitely got some, some issues with the space and needs there. Where's your management? We talked about that. The EOC center itself is undersized, the breakout support space around it isn't adequate. And we talked about for your, your department itself, a lot of that comes from this room and overflow for those situations when you have one of those, you know, touchy meetings where you get inundated by, by the public showing up. So the plus for your department is more related to this room and overflow conditions than anything else. The minus on the auditor is mostly concerned with utilization of prime business space or office space by voting equipment. Is there a way to solve that in a way that frees up space in the building? And I said that the departments will be shrinking as human resources side or anything like that. Filing voting machines, that's where we can find some efficiencies from in that department. DHS, they've had a contraction of the human resources side and some inefficient spaces there. And we also talked about benefits affairs, trade services, that space is, a lot of it's being used because it's one of those. They haven't got the space, so we can put some storage in cubic holes and do some things. It's not very efficient. They, they have the ability to sort of somehow be more efficient, probably shrink in size.
Does the county attorney, does that improve the courts? That they didn't do that?
I think it's more acute on the county attorney side. The courts probably didn't, we were just being honest, we probably didn't get as much feedback from judicial courts as we would have liked. But other than the courtroom itself, the grand courtroom, the large courtroom space, the rest of the space used by the judges and by the courts support for that isn't, isn't too bad, other than just the lack of the, of the big courtroom and some breakout meeting space because the little, the little corner.
A restroom as well.
Yes, restroom. We can go ahead and add, I think, some of the judicial court side for some of those specific goal points as well.
The Christmas storage stuff.
They, they mentioned there's some spots in that building that they could do better and solve some of their space troubles.
Sure, the courts did confirm if you know there's, there's a library. They did confirm that that, those books could go away. Scott Hand did say directly that they could. There's always been a conversation, well, who's using them while they're here? There's a legal requirement, if you have a computer and those are available, they're available. So if that was worked out internally, that is a large room that could be reused for purpose. And there's also a break room up there that is not being utilized. So there could be some shifts and back to the restroom too, that's all the course.
There's a lot of libraries in that county attorney space?
Yeah, it's, it's been deemed that in Scott Green, it's county space. It's the books.
Right.
He said that in his opinion, they can go away, but where do they go?
Right, yeah, right, yeah. I was just thinking about the, all the holiday storage stuff.
Yeah.
If the court, active person could then move up, if there's space up there and there is an elevator in the building.
Well, there's also, there's a lot of space in that second floor that doesn't seem to be used. First one, it seems like, I would just call it if an office sized, where it's open to the hallway and it's got a lot of cupboards in it. And when I went through it, I just kind of went through it to see if it was being used. I'll open these doors, if there's anything in one of them, I'll close it immediately. Nothing, absolutely nothing. I mean, that was like a 10 by 15 or the east. No, it wasn't the break room, it was another room on the other side.
There's another one on the, if you look at the plan.
And I think there was supposed to be some staff room or something, but there's nobody in it. There's, I think there's tons of room up there.
Yep.
And the, the judges may differ, they may, they just basically won't hold on to it. But when we're looking at, you know, places where we've got people just on top of each other.
Yep.
And just in case, if someone could use.
So and I think Brett was also hinting at this, we only included for this list the plus minus, like the really high level and we're gonna issue everybody, so.
Of course, there might be, there's some waste, but there's some overpack that might kind of balance out.
Sure, sure.
So that's kind of our high level observations as we kind of collected all that data. I think next step we want to do is just open up for more discussion rather than us presenting. And then when we're done with that, we'll discuss the next steps.
I'm not supportive of using space that making it more efficient for the auditor, but also using that space for offices that the public comes to. I mean, when you're looking at election equipment, storage, George and Brer station, storage, all this stuff here, I mean, obviously it needs to be someplace, but the second floor of this building is not the place for it. And I just see that being a good space for, I look at it and I think, oh, all the things that are planning development is downstairs, move those up, move all the storage that in particular, you know, machines that need to go out the door, they could go out the back, this door right there. That seems like a much better use of basement space. And offices seem like a much better use of second floor space. So I'm, I'm, I'm really supportive of that. I do have some concerns in the auditor's offices where there's, there's three people in one office back there. I've always been concerned about that. It seems like they could, you know, either larger space or different space. I mean, I know they all work together, but it's a small space.
Yep, finance side in the background. Yeah, I think we talked with Lucy about that. And I, I think when we asked a question about that, either reconfiguring, they all kind of said, no, we work together all the time. You need to be able to talk to each other. And they were, they were pretty.
And they don't want those, their window.
Be honest, they don't want their windows.
Yeah.
So, you know, Lucy doesn't have one, which you, you're as well, so.
And you said, emergency management needs more climate controlled storage space, right? So would it be possible, if we're looking for climate controlled storage space, is it possible to have voting equipment? Could we be looking for a larger space? Could they be separated and have both of those in there somehow that where they're easily accessible?
I think emergency management wants their trailer and something.
Is that what they're talking about?
Their vehicles, trailers.
That, that emergency suppliers of their storage.
Yeah, so bottled water and those types of things that they don't want to.
They've not got that invented shutout on the lot, straight, yeah. You saw that.
Pretty, yes, we did. So it's pretty much what is in the reliable street they would want to be in.
I did ask Keith, because I was in a meeting with him the other day, how he felt about emergency management being in the Bay of, as opposed to possibly being in Ames. And he said he could go either way. There's advantages to being in Ames, there's also some advantages to being in the Bay of because of some of the county employees that he relies on to staff the EOC work here. But then I thought, wait, and a lot of them live in Ames. You know, engineer, you know, he comes and staffs, you know, a lot when there's like 3H or something like that. He lives in Ames. Now, so we've got that to think about also, just because somebody's office in Nevada doesn't mean that Nevada's a more convenient place for them to be called into the EOC. What Keith said he realized was that, and he said, I wouldn't have thought about this until the pandemic. But we had a lot of supplies coming in here and we had to store a lot of those. And wherever I am, I think storage space is, you know, some space where we can store things, you know, bring them in when stuff's being transported, you know, like from human security and it's going out to hospitals or whatever. They almost mean, I wouldn't say warehouse space, but some, right, some space where they can just stack stuff up. And I saw where they were stacking it up.
Yeah.
It was in their offices.
Yeah.
What, what's his request are connected to a loading dock at all or?
He didn't say a loading dock, but I can't think of what occurred. The, the other thing I asked him was, because we had talked about, could the EOC and emergency manager be in human services center? I said, you know, a lot of the EOC, you don't use that a lot. I mean, you use it when you need it, but it's a lot of space that doesn't get used very often. Could it work for workstations for people who maybe need to be working in Ames? Could it do double duty with everybody knowing that if there's an emergency, it's got to be cleared out or partially cleared out? And when they're really do, when they really do have an emergency, they don't have all those stations filled at once. Because it depends on the emergency. They may only have two.
They might have a pod over here and a pod over there.
Exactly, or they might just have a few people. I mean, I've gone down like other journeys, you know, this or that. And then, you know, kind of talk to people, you know, and thank them for doing it. There are like maybe two or three people, they didn't have the whole place open. So if it could be in pods, you know, one pod could be used maybe. But if it was able to be opened up for training or opened up for, because sometimes when they train, they do that every day. So a real flex space. But he said he had no problems opening up, opening up the EOC when it wasn't being used for people who were working. So.
I think one question then comes, I think what you said and even Keith said then, is if you do have more than one person there, if there's no, if you're all on the phone at the same time, just that would be a challenge.
So, yeah, yeah. But it goes back to when we have the conversation with Keith of having it, you know, because you may be dealing with a same emergency, but different factions of it. And so if you are in different areas and there's either maybe in the same space, but far enough apart or something that separates so that mitigates some of those.
Right, right.
You know, in, in fact, what you're saying, a flexible space. Right now, that, that setup in those workstations are, that's their other setup. They're not going, the power's coming down from, you know. It's good to know that there's some flexibility there. Is the majority of his volunteers, aside from the county, are they coming from the Ames?
He primarily uses county employees. I think he used to have volunteers from the community, but it's just kind of county employees have more knowledge about the county and, you know, more reliable in some ways. There's less training that needs to be done.
They're a team from the Red Cross, an emergency response company that they get used.
All right. There are some volunteers he's got, but they miss it at the transport.
I don't know that they have an amendment.
No, no, they do some other things. There's some search and rescue people, those are sheriffs, but I use transport. Um, the other thing I was thinking is that emergency management does work really closely with the city of Ames and the Bay of State. Um, the other thing I was thinking is that emergency management does work really closely with the city of Ames and the bio estate.
Yep.
And with our public health department, which is located in Mary Greeley in Ames. So there are, you know. It's not the right use of the word, but adjacencies in terms of services.
Yeah.
I can see how emergency management could be such in Ames as opposed. And the other thing Joey and I were talking about was, would there be room at the far end of this parking lot to build a small garage? So the trailer would be there, man trailer could be there. And that's a possibility.
I mean, thinking of the.
Yeah, 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 overweight far to the east, right, east end.
Right, where will we pile the snow?
Oh, you can tell that woman's worked in that building.
Uh, heated, uh, perky. Uh, yeah, but, but, yes, but, I mean, that's always a consideration, where, where are some of those things about?
You know, and then you get to, if you do those different things in that building, what is the parking need?
Yep.
And it might be more, if you put in the courtroom in, it might be more certain times, it might be less, well, V H S. I don't know how they operate it right now.
Yeah.
You know how many people even have walking in anymore, but it seems like their parking need has gone down because they're doing so much remote work.
Right.
They don't have as many employees in there, you know, I, I think.
But just putting it starting there though.
There, for sure.
If it's, if it's busy when there are big meetings or voting.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, voting.
Sure. That's a mission. Would that be pretty much this building as well?
Yeah.
Or other, other places in town that would see that larger volume.
Yeah.
Use conservation sometimes.
Yeah.
So, storage, building central storage or storage for a large number of vehicles, if you mean, like, for, for H building? Where do we have land to do that?
Justice Center. So. You have some of the, the back lot of Justice Center, but it's also the conversation about increased parking. If you were to move county attorney to be able to go in the back, so there's a, a balance there, if that's even an option. It's the wealth yield.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you have to be, yeah, you have to be real careful about that, there's not as much space.
Uh, it's, it's not very sensitive. It's, it's fine now, we're open ones, it's good. How about the old county home site, everyone's, turn, turn, turn. Did you go look at that land?
Yeah.
That's a great.
The range, oh, yeah.
I didn't know the address, you know, um, we did. Um, I think that there's some question there about, um, some agreements with the neighbor in the farmer going through the lot.
Ray bins.
What?
Bins.
Yes, and, um, IRBM has some of their, um, storage for gravel and things up there, and then you have the range. So the, the question would be, um, could you, I don't know if there'd be enough room for the range itself, they're putting a building out there. And the other issue about it being there is this accessibility on gravel, um, and inclement weather. So, uh, it may be central, but the serviceability of those roads is, is not.
And it slows too.
It does, like, overall, I think accessibility of that site is a, is a really big drawback.
Um, yeah, I'm not crazy, I know people talk about it, and I've gone over it several, looked at it several times, and I think it's a great site for I B R M, you know. They've got, you know, a nice building there now, they've got stories that they need for stuff, they're doing much more with them, I know, I can't see it.
No, and I, I think what, what they're asking for, what the sheriff's department's asking for, the range is a pole building with restaurants and, you know. Uh, heated, climate-controlled storage and, you know, a sixty by one hundred pole building. And, um, you think of, uh, septic and all of that, perky and all those issues out there, I think you, you are running into, again, space.
Real.
Yeah.
Did Amelia Shonar, our county development director, tell you that, that they were looking at to try to find some land for a debris site?
Yes.
And she said she was going to come talk to us, I don't know that she's had any luck.
I haven't heard anything, I don't know if you've heard anything.
On a couple of. She gave, she reached out to me and there. They weren't actually, and that's kind of about last night.
But planes or, there, there was a reason somebody wanted to get rid of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It really was time to deal with it.
Yeah, I was just hoping something would come along with that, that not only would be something you could use for a debris site, I don't, I don't know legally if you could have a debris site next to or have. You know, some other facility, but I thought, you know, having a better piece of land to develop. Which really, yeah, it, it need to, yeah.
Easily accessible.
They don't have the money to, you know, different properties.
Does it?
Yeah, he's, he's been talking with. People own Wood Street Building that's just, that's to the Justice Center complex.
Yeah.
And I don't know where he's at with that, I have, he's, but he, but there has been more than one conversation with the owners of that facility, so.
That would be ideal.
Yeah, it's a great location.
Yeah.
Sorry, God, buildings get big laid out here, so. I think Brett is on vacation right now, so. In talks with them. They've been responsive.
He's still on vacation?
I think so, vacation. I like Connie, I see you're on there.
Is he still fishing? Connie's not really listening to us.
Yes, he is, she says so. Good for him, I mean, it is the Friday before Labor Day.
He was fishing a week ago.
That's okay, takes a lot of time sometimes.
I saw it on Facebook.
So.
I think your one comment about the emergency management, the thought of it in Ames, just sort of out there, is that the entire building is backed up by a generator?
Yes, that is.
And that, that is, um, a, a very big consideration.
Right.
Think of, well, now I have restaurants available, I've got heat for the whole building, I've got everything there when they need it.
And you're doing operations twenty-four hours.
And the other thing then is, when we have so many employees living in Ames, if there is some kind of disaster, let's say it's flooding. And you literally are having a hard time getting from Ames to Nevada. You know, having all that extra workspace, having it workspace set up, that people could work from there, from either the E O C side or maybe some other, you know, what you call it. I think we can use that building so much better than we are right now. And the juvenile court, I think also, when everybody comes to Nevada, because one person is here. Doesn't it make more sense to have that one person, because most of, most of families, you know, who are going to come in with kids are going to be from neighbors.
I think that it goes back to with the family, and sometimes it's public transit issues. And trying to get there, and, you know, you're going from Ames here, you know, you may actually have people be present for those hearings. If it's in a location that's accessible to the community.
And it's just a going courtroom without having the two huge differences there, you just take two that don't have an elevator between them and. You just slap them together, right?
Just slap them together.
In, in the human services building now. The idea of trying to get a large space without homes in it. If I'm understanding what those squares are. Yeah, those little columns, there's columns all the way through the space, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where, you look at everything, it's got that, that dark, especially like you go through V H S down that hill.
Yeah.
So, there's a reason that there's a big dark spot there, it's got scale problem. Like, one's a multi-purpose room, you kind of think about it when you're in that room, but that whole more than, like, the last five feet. So impressed, built, so. It doesn't have any space underneath it, same way with the long hallway on the south side. So, those are the, basically, the main structural columns for that whole more second building. South side, that whole wall, wall, it's. The inside wall and its windows on the underside, that's another one, it can't leave us over the rest of the building. That long wall, I know.
A, a benefit though to the juvenile court is that the majority of the individuals present are the ones in the L-shaped or U-shaped table that are actually there for the, the hearing. As opposed to they don't have a large jury, or, sorry, gall, area back there where people are, you know, witnessing the proceedings. And so, um, they tend to be smaller, uh, so as far as the program size. Um, I think it would take, take us doing that homework to see with structure, how that, how that would work out in that building. I'm just looking at it, I think that it could be accommodated.
Yeah, I think same thing with like E O C, you know, yes, we've got columns, but I think it's a lot about orientation and how we think about use of the space. And, and especially when we talk about flexibility or subdividing and some of those things, we just have to look at it maybe a little different than, than today, and see if that can all fit. And how, how those different uses, if we try to repurpose the building with all of these, do we even have enough space to then do everything there? Can we do juvenile courts and do E O C, and, you know, we, we just need to, just kind of study it, which is, which is next steps.
It sounds like a, there's a question I was just going to ask you, is do you think we've got the space with moving around and all of this? To get maybe most of our needs, maybe not a garage. You know, maybe not a shooting range or something like that, but most of our office space needs, public meeting rooms, conference rooms. Can we get most of that done within the footprints we have?
I think your challenge, at least what I've seen, is, is going to be the Justice Center. I feel that that with the county attorney, um, and the courts being pretty well-sized, um, even with the space upstairs, I think that's where the, the. And we had broached the conversation about can some of those county attorney individuals, because it's already split. You know, can, can more move to Ames, we asked that question. No, um, and then we, we, we also, you know, uh, could, could you do a little bit more of some separation to, to kind of alleviate that pinch point, so to speak? And, um, they want to be in that building, so, uh, I think that's the.
I want a attorney working in Ames, all that person's work is in Nevada, there's no space to accommodate.
And some of this is a little bit of a, sort of a cascading or a waterfall, so in other words. If we're, if we look at moving E O C out of this building and that frees up space where emergency management was. How do we then think about repurposing that, and what space does that free up in this building that we can, it, it's just kind of a, it's, it's a moving all the puzzle pieces around? And that's what's going to take, I think, us looking at a couple of different scenarios to see, because to your point about, you know, being challenged at the Justice Center, I think. There's the possibility, depending on what can or cannot move from some of the, from some of this building to other locations, that you could be challenged here as well. Based on storage needs and, and kind of, I'll say, the, the wants and growth, uh, that we're looking for. Is it, is it close or closer, maybe, but I think you're still really like, right on the edge of being very tight, so.
Seems like, and, and, and maybe it's just an entry or something, it seems like I looked at the Justice Center and I said, boy, this is a simple waste of space. But there's not much you can do with all this grand entry and two-story stuff and everything. It just wasn't built, I think, efficiently with the square footage that's in it. And that's, that's, that's kind of, that's kind of sad. I just have a bigger, more useful square footage in that footprint.
Some of the, that vision before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I feel, and I feel like there's two things that, that, uh, I learned today, or two separate things that I'm thinking about, the things. Like what we're talking about right now, if, let's find different ways to do X, Y, or Z a little differently. And then there are other things that are like, boy, I'm glad I know that, I'm glad I know the bathrooms are not A D A compliant in this building or that building. Or that there's no, uh.
Insulation.
Insulation, what?
Yeah.
How can we have people working in that building with no insulation? Like, here are the absolutes, if we do nothing else, these are the, no one should be, uh, showering in the jail. And then that should not, that should not happen ever again, like, whatever we have to do. I mean, that, those are the things that need to be.
And that's a good point, because what you're talking about is prioritizing.
Right, definitely.
And then we'll obviously be talking about sequencing. If we move things around, it's, well, you can't move this until you move that and whatever, so. Yeah, those two issues will be.
But if the sequence, it can help with the priorities, and if they don't fill together, there's some beauty in that, it works.
Sure.
It would be lovely to get all that equipment out of the two H building.
Yes.
Yes, because that's just a thing every year.
I don't think it's sustainable anymore either, like, I, I think we're, we're at a point, from what I've heard in different places, we're gonna have to make a decision because that building. May not be available to us very much longer.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of the, it seems like every year, like, the time we have to vacate it in places like this year. It's five weeks we have to vacate, you know, like IRBM. The time is tough, when you start listing everywhere they have to put the equipment, it's like, it's like. Mile radius that you've got equipments with them.
Right, and then some of it's out in the elements, and so, we're, you know.
There's the staff time, it takes, just our half of it, it takes two, three staff members, three, four days to move it out. Same deal with the back, you know. But, yeah, and plus, you know, the rumors of. You have to think of our own, long-term plan. Yeah, nobody's come out and said that, but I've heard rumors that we've got plans for that building.
Well, I think anytime we're renting, or anytime we're, we're in borrowed space. Something that, that's that significant, that is, we're clearly not shrinking that equipment. We should be talking about a permanent solution now, since, since we're having these conversations.
Is there? Oh, I was just thinking about additional space in Nevada, you know, the place that next looking at, are there other places like that? We should, we should really be looking for. We can. I'm also, we talked about this the other day, we use Gates Auditorium, the Gates Hall. And is that going to be available to us from the school? School's still purchasing it from the city.
School. So, yeah, school owns it.
The city's the other way, I'm sorry. Yeah.
I know that our conversations with Gates Auditorium the other day were also technology.
Right.
So, there, there was no compatibility with many, their systems are too old to accommodate what you need from a county perspective. So, if it's a, if it's a leased facility, or if they're going to upgrade it, so.
It would be a way of upgrading our technology.
What was that?
Gate hall, we don't, now that school owns it, it will be upgraded.
Okay.
The other thing I was thinking is. Is a grand courtroom utilized all of the time? And if it were not utilized, it could be used for some other thing.
Well, I'm kind of thinking about like Ames City Hall, they have a courtroom, and they have their, their city council room. And there's a, a self partition between the two, so.
Yeah, so they, they open, they open, well, that's usually at night though, when there isn't court.
But when I, but what I'm saying is, something similar, you should have two courtrooms, and if there was like a huge, uh, trial or something. Could that space then be opened up and turned into a grand courtroom, I mean, you would lose a courtroom. But at least if you're not, you're not, we're not gonna, hopefully, not gonna have that. hopefully not going to have that many trials that require a grant. The thing that's difficult with that, with courtroom design, is sightlines and how how the players on stage have to see one another, as well as screens and all of those other pieces of technology. Separation and privacy and and all of that would start to be a concern. Very hard to try to make a courtroom that's subdivided.
But the reason you end up with a grand courtroom is because your attendance is larger, that's in charge. Right, so if people who are, the lines of sight are important for the judge, the defendant, the attorneys, it's not as important for the audience.
Oh, so maybe instead of having two two courtrooms, with judge here, judge here, you have judge here, judge here, and partition here.
Something like that, or you can just say, you're really on the one side, you've got two courtrooms, you open them up, but on the one side is where you have your judge, your counsel tables and what and your defendant, and on the other and the other side, which you're not, you know, that that's then more audience. Because it because that's not, I think you need a grand courtroom, you need more audience here. You don't need more judges or more defendants.
One of it is process jurors, you know, there there's all of that that happens as well, where you're bringing in X amount of numbers of people that have to be present to see that proceeding. But yes, I get your point.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I'm all for if there's if there's ways to use space that doesn't get used a lot.
In multiple different ways.
Different ways, I think that makes a lot of sense, and I think sometimes additionally, I encourage people to use it, I think it's a good room, but we don't use it all the time, you know, we use it. We use it probably for us about usually six hours a week. For training, it's used for department head meetings when we're not doing it by Zoom.
We have looked at board supervisor rooms before as actually working as another. Because of the way it's set up, and if you start to move some things a little bit more strategically, depending on the type of court, you can make it work. But that that's in smaller counties that really need to have those, you know, where they're not going to be tripping over.
Did you know that this was a courtroom?
Yeah.
Yeah. Really, we want the building that there was court.
But I mean, that's.
What are your next steps? Do you kind of look and come back with like your suggestions, your configurations?
That is a specific weekend to where we wanted to go next, so thank you. Yes, that's part of the reason that we wanted to get together today, not only to sort of be great for download all the things that we've heard, but to have these kinds of discussions, just to make sure that we've got all of the inputs. So that when we go back and we start to look at possible scenarios and solutions that we know we're taking into account, if there are things that we know are going to be priorities or ideas that you have or any, you know, preconceived notions, we want to have those all in hand as we do that. So our plan would be to go away for about four weeks here, until right around the beginning of October, October first. And then we would come back to you with, I'll I'll say fifty to seventy percent concepts. Essentially, at that point, what we would do is bring some different scenarios and options that test many of these ideas. We should be able to tell you whether or not some of those options or scenarios truly work, and we can show you then by visually laying those out. And we should be able to then show different different ways we might solve it, you know, whether that's something stays versus something goes and and what do you do if 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 A then B kind of scenarios, and talk about which ones make the most sense. At that point, we would then go away and start to finalize those concepts. And and still, we would want to come back then and show you kind of, okay, taking into account all of the feedback we gave us at that last session. What is this sort of final concept and direction start to look like? And then we we'd want to have that final deliverable to you by October twenty ninth. I think one of the things that we will need to talk about is just the timing of cost estimating. We have a partner in story construction that we propose to look at some of this and put costs to it. And I don't know if you need to have the cost before the twenty ninth, if it's something where we can sort of overlap some of those efforts so that we can finalize the concept, make sure that that you all have it for a plane from a planning purpose to start to to integrate into your planning, but then maybe have the detailed cost estimating come after that, or if we need to start looking at some of the estimating ahead of that and overlap some of those early efforts, even though we might not have a hundred percent final concept done and kind of look at how those sit over top of each other. So I think that's one thing you might just need to logistically talk with Joby a little bit about, but that's that's kind of our plan going forward for the next eight weeks.
Getting us cost estimates is part of the contract.
It is.
Coming back for more money.
No, 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 it's part of the contract, it's just a matter of timing and when we do the estimating to get you that the final number that go with those concepts.
So by the end of October?
That's that's the target we are shooting for, yes.
We wanted to hit your C I P and and the question goes into that, you know, getting that in front of you guys, so then you could start to do that planning effort. I think though that is still that that question about when that process estimate would would want to be delivered. And part of, I think, what Danielle getting to is that story construction is going to want to do, if we've got a hundred percent of twenty nine, they're going to want to do a hundred percent process estimate off that a hundred percent drawing, so they really have a good understanding of this company. That's what we're asking that that deliverable, you know, really needs to be done.
And I will tell you, I mean, I think we've talked about this, this is aggressive to to, I think, get all of this done. But I think some of the conversations that we've had leading up to this today and and with with you each individually have been helpful in making sure we kind of we have some ideas on where we where we want to go and how we start to test those, so.
So on the twenty ninth, are you, I'm sorry, I I need to walk through it again, on the twenty ninth, are you saying we should have everything? To present, you you will have everything to present hopefully?
We, I think what we would choose for is we would try to have all of the concept work done. What I don't know if we will have in hand yet is the cost estimate that then goes with that concept. So we want to have the deliverable that says here, here's what we believe is the best solution that you that we've now had a couple of chances to talk about, and here's what we're proposing. It's whether or not we have all of the final cost cycle with it on that date, and that's the piece I think we need to talk about.
Talking on October twenty ninth.
And are you saying that story construction won't really wants to give partial, a partial idea, is that what you're? Because like, I guess, let me tell you what I'm thinking would be ideal for me, is that when you come back on October first and say, here are fifty to seventy percent, you know, concepts. And then have us, as we talk through it, say, okay, yeah, these these things look good, and then on the twenty ninth, come back with, so these things that we talked about, that you said, yeah, these ideas look good, here are approximations for these ones. And then we narrow it down from there. It would be hard for me to say this and that sounds like a good, the direction to go with that. I I am not good at estimating how much projects cost, so I would need even a estimation of what we're talking about.
I'm also wondering, are you planning to go back and do base touches with department heads and say, are we missing something? Is there anything that won't work here? Or should we give some time for department heads to look at it, maybe say, excuse me? There's maybe a something here that would be an unintended consequence?
I I agree with that, I think that the question there too would be, let's just steer, we're going to move a I T from this building to Ames, and that's part of our proposal. And not to say what we're proposing is is set in stone, but you have that conversation with Barb and what that looks like, and could completely take that off the table. So I I think that there's there's some sensitivities there, and I I think I need you guys to tell us what your thoughts are on bringing that up to those offices of departments, when we may be completely, you know, we're saying all of a sudden juvenile is in Ames, you know, and stir that thought. So I I'd really like to hear from you guys what you think about that, because it it is great to go back and say those things. Maybe it's to ask the question, did we receive everything from our meeting versus here's where you're. Right, you know, yeah, I don't know, you you just tell us.
We've we've done some planning efforts both ways, basically, is what Anna Marie is saying. We've we've done some where we've come with the solutions and at a leadership level, a decision is made and guidance is then given back to the departments. We've also done some where we then go back and test it with departments and then make a final call. If if I think it takes a little more time to go back and revisit with each department, so that's one consideration, but then there's also, I think, the sensitivity.
What if we use the October first meeting, just let department heads know about it, and let officials, let everybody know about it? And say, zoom in to hear the presentation. I know, what are we doing, you know, we might be, you know, making some, you know, giving you some feedback again, but that gives them an opportunity to hear what's being talked about and to say, you know, you'll you may get some, if there's a big major change, it's being, you know, being proposed for your department, you may get, you'll probably get a a follow up call from our consultants, but also feel free to contact me if you see something that's a big negative unintended consequence or whatever, to get some feedback, just to make sure. It is some really big, there might be some really big changes here, and I think it's worth kind of kicking the tires one more time.
Yeah, I think it's time to let them know, I mean, they would have known if they had a meeting. But. Right, right, right.
I think the next one, when they add some of the concept. Then they build a way in that, I think, doing it, they can come to a meeting like this versus trying to sit down and get meet with, but it's not, to me, that's not feasible meeting if everybody.
No, but but that'll give people an idea.
It was almost impossible to do it first.
However, this is this is recorded, and so we could send a link out to all of the departments, and just run here, like, take a listen. This was the conversation, if if there was a part of the conversation that actually you don't, you know, think think something was missed in, or maybe somebody heard something, meant it this way, and it sounds like it was received that way, make sure that you reach out to us now, because this is when we're.
Right, and then also to do the same, to to do a little advanced promo on the October first meeting and just say, you know, feel free to zoom in and not necessarily have a debate and make make a five hour meeting, but hear what's being said, and then later, if you have concerns about that, here's how to, you know. Because some sometimes somebody can save you, save us all a big expensive mistake. I've made big expensive mistakes before, and I I sometimes say, gee, I wish I'd run this by somebody, or I wish somebody had spoken up, you know, and.
So are you are you needing direction from us about the cost estimates, or were you just sharing with us?
Sharing with you, I I will tell you, because I wanted to revisit that, so I think if we're talking about trying to put any kind of even preliminary numbers to a solution between when we meet on October first and October fifteenth, it may be unrealistic to do that, because we're going to have to take feedback away from our meeting on the first, whatever that looks like, integrate it into changing scenarios, and then also get story destruction to look at it and put cost to it. I don't know that we'll have enough time in that short of a window to get all of that. So I think the way we have structured this is more to say, like, let's get feedback on getting the right kinds of solutions in place. When we look at this with story, we can always then with them look at, you know, scenarios for, okay, what if, you know, do you if you do this, but don't do that, we can have them break things apart. We can even do that post with them to to continue to study different scenarios, hey, what if we did this this way instead, based on the cost we got? That we can all do as follow up, but I I think to Anna Marie's point, we're going to want to give them something that is at least a a scenario, a concept that has a little bit more definition to it, in order to get something that's a little bit better, and then we can sort of start to play with how that how that works or.
Let me check that, October first, you come back with fifty to seventy percent complete scenarios and options.
Yep.
And did you say something on October fifteenth?
We would, we would come back to you basically to say, okay, here's what we heard from you, here's how we then reconfigured based on that, so let's just say the department heads are in that meeting, right? And we hear from one of them, nope, we can't, that that doesn't work for us. We're going to need to go back and retool and say, okay, here's what we heard was the favorite concept, but this didn't work. So we're going to have to take that into account and make some changes and come back then with one that we want to confirm with you, okay, here's everything we heard. Here's how we then made changes to accommodate all of that, that's why we call it kind of that ninety to ninety five percent, and get you all to say, yep, that looks like what we all talked about. It does, it does incorporate all the changes we think it needs to have. Then we would want to take that and start to go and have story look at it from a cost.
And they should have it back by October twenty ninth.
No, not sorry, sorry, people don't have that.
So we don't have an October twenty ninth.
October twenty ninth, I think we can have the final drawings. Concept, it just won't have the process estimate.
So you have the deliverable, so to speak, without the process estimate, the story is going to be.
They're going to need more.
That's what I thought, and that's where I was getting all confused, right? Okay, so fifty, seventy, and ninety five percent in the file, and then sometime in November, whenever it takes them, they'll have process estimates. I'm not sure that I'm totally worried about being done in time for the C I P. Because this is, this is going to take a whole lot, I mean, it's going to take funding plan, it's going to take, you know, we don't know it's going to be, it's going to be a multi-year kind of plan. So I don't think we're in a big hurry to get it into our C I P this year. You know, man, I don't know what you. December, so it's still doable, but but it's going to have to be a multi-year, I mean, how we're going to do it, you know, the sequencing. Depending on how many moves and pages we get here, you know, it could be a, you know, it would take some time to just figure out what's going to be what year.
Well, I think that's part of even in the C I P plan, that's where we review and make some determinations as to what year it makes sense to fall on.
Obviously, you have a evolving C I P plan. Need to know is whether something you've been concerned needs to be capitated, or something might be likely to be accelerated, that's one of the big advantages to being, you know, having us help you in some concert with your C I Ps. We've got some projects that are listed in our current C I P. The space assessment, there's a couple of them that are slated to come up. So that was my thinking is we can get that in front of the C I P, we can kind of start getting out there because there's some big dollar projects that are in the in our C I P now that. And again, I totally understand, you know, let's not rush anything, and just to meet the C I P, but you know, meet this year's C I P planning, but I would like, firstly, have some dollar amounts in front of us.
And and I might also say, you know, we can't do this now because it runs afoul of how we do that, so there may be things we push years down the road. Yeah.
Not that we're going to get everything in the year, and what year we're going to do it in, but just kind of having a plan in front of us for this year. The plan in front of us for this year's C I P.
This is pretty exciting. This is pretty exciting. Every decoration plan for this room.
Is there anything more?
Do you need any, is there anything you need from us, any direction you need from us? No, I think the feedback we heard from you all today was really helpful. That's exactly what we were hoping, is just to be able to have some discussion and dialogue and, and understand thoughts and preferences. So now it's just, it's just us to go back and start to put pen to paper and come back to you with some scenarios that test some things and be able to show you what that looks like.
Answer the square footage question that we've, that we, we need to get to the bottom of, and where things go and how they sound.
Well, thank you for your time today.
Absolutely, thank you. And I know we set this fire for you, the adjourned. If you guys have anything to follow up with, definitely go through Joby and send a message. If you have questions, anything, we're, we're open door all the time.
Great, thank you.
Thank you all, thank you.